It is ten AM. It's Tuesday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Call this meeting to order. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. So. Kylie, would you please take roll?
Supervisor Howard? Supervisor Starkey?
I'm here.
Supervisor Short?
Here.
Chair Hemmingson?
I'm here.
I'll note that Supervisor Berkowitz is absent.
Thank you. And at this time, we're going to take a moment of reflection. Thank you. Now if you'll all stand, Supervisor Starkey will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introduction of new employees.
Not today, Chair.
No employees. County Council, any actions from closed session?
Not today, Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Are there any such items? Okay, seeing none. We are going to go on to supervisor reports. Brief reports, announcements relative to county programs, projects, progress by two by two committees, goal committees, and any other thing we got going. Val, you want to start us, or Supervisor Starkey, you want to start us off?
Certainly. It's pretty light this last two weeks. Had several Point Saint George discussions, given that this is now in Supervisor Hemmingson's district, I have passed the baton on to him, and he's doing a fabulous job. I went and I observed the point in time count. I didn't really get too involved. I had trained for it, but it was such a well-oiled machine that I didn't know necessarily that they needed my involvement. So many commuter partners were there, and I just want to say once again that Roy Jackson and Rebecca Green did an amazing job organizing the event. I attended our monthly chamber meeting. In addition to that, I also attended a Chamber of Commerce retreat. So we spent an afternoon with the Chamber Board and brainstormed some ways in which we continue to grow business and market our tourism. I had several discussions regarding geomedical and psychiatric services. You know, given that we just introduced Well Path about six months ago, it's important for us to just oversee what they're doing and making sure that they're providing the services that we had asked them to do, and how can we make sure that we incorporate behavioral health issues or services into those into that plan. Working on that, I continue to work on some animal service issues. I'm learning that they're incredibly understaffed and overpopulated with dogs. So but being there hands-on gives me an opportunity to identify ways in which that we can assist as a board. So like last meeting, we did approve that supervisor position, and I believe that's going to go a long way in improving the structure. So working on a special project to get some custom-built dog houses for inside each kennel, so hopefully with the help of maybe probation and some of the high schools, we can work on a plan for that. I attended the Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting for Supervisor Berkowitz. I worked on a few constituent concerns, whether it be an illegal parking parked motorhome on Del Monte or homeless issues near Mary Peacock School and Harding. You know, as a board member, we get those complaints, and while I'd love to single-handedly respond myself, we do rely on the work of our county employees. So once again, I give so much credit to Dominic Mello and Code Enforcement who continue to take all my calls and really work hard to address these multitude of issues that we have going on. Thankfully, because of Measure R and because of our community, we were able to fund an additional code enforcement officer. So while, you know, the issues are going to always exist, I kind of liken it to doing laundry, right? You do all the laundry and you look around and there's still more laundry to do, and that's kind of what this is is doing so, but hopefully having two code enforcement officers is going to get to those issues quicker. I had a call with Erin Dunn. She is the staff person for Assemblyman Wood and talked a lot about what we can do to perhaps find some funding for our jail. There's some improvements that need to be made over there. I attended the Housing Element Workshop, which was really interesting. I identified some properties in which we can perhaps build, and I attended the local behavioral health meeting yesterday. We had a lot of discussions about fifty-one-fifties and the process for that. I think that's important for us as supervisors to know because we get oftentimes get calls and complaints that you know, we're not having enough mental health services, and there's such a process that goes into all of that. And finally, they updated us on the Crisis Care Mobile Unit Grant, and that's something that is in the works and that we're continuing to pursue. So that is my report.
Thank you. Supervisor Short?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the OCTA meeting. Redwood Coast Transit, we were encouraged that there are four new drivers being trained, so there can be a restoration of some of the route service throughout the county. Attended the Local Transportation Commission meeting. I voiced a complaint from a constituent in regard to the intersection at Helen Hill and Elk Valley Road. The executive director was able to provide me from some information from a previous study to pass on to that constituent. We also talked about the continuing work on the development of solutions for Elk Valley Crossroad at one ninety-nine and the Timbers Boulevard issue in Smith River at Dollar General. Participated in the cleanup on Highway one-on-one as part of the adopted highway program. Participated in the tri-agency meeting, then subsequent to that, a special meeting with our CAO and Clint Shad in regard to the tri-agency. Listened in the Harbor Board meeting. Dealt with constituent complaints about the beach boat on South Beach. Appreciate the help from our CAO with the answers to to those constituents. Found that that boat is on Redwood National Park property and that they are working diligently through the wading through the red tape to deal with getting that boat off the beach. Also listened in on the local behavioral health board meeting. And last night, listened in on the city council meeting. Also participated in a city-county two-by-two with dignitaries from Ricas and Takota discussing how we can deepen the sister-city relationship in order to enhance learning opportunities for our children and to further commerce between the two communities. And that is my report.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Short mentioned attended a tri-agency meeting where we continued discussions around wind power and trying to find ways to to take the agency on some next steps, which we, as you've heard some of the controversy at our last board meetings, we need to find a way to potentially either continue funding the agency or continue in the circle that we've been in, which is to not fund it and go out of business essentially. But we can't under our bylaws, so we're in this continuous circle and have been for the last eight years trying to fix it. We'll get there. Had lunch with Tom Jackson, President of Humboldt State University and now Cal Poly last week in Eureka and ways that he could begin doing some regional approach, attracting students from our area down to the new Cal Poly. They believe this will help their enrollment tremendously. They've been seeing at a minimum fifteen to seventeen percent declines in enrollment over the last several years. But this year, they've already seen an uptick to about three percent. So he says they're off to a good start, especially with designation, so glad to hear that. As Supervisor Starkey mentioned, continue to discuss issues around our jail and geomedical issues and trying to find solutions and ways that we could grab the dollars necessary to meet all these continued state mandates that we've been saddling with for now decades and stay in the black, is what it amounts to. Attended a meeting with Supervisor Hemmingson with our Natural Resources Goals Committee meeting where we had some great news where the county and Smith River Smith River Alliance was able to get together and get some funding for our Saxon Boat Ramp, which will be approved potentially as soon as August. This is a huge undertaking, funding potentially coming from the Wildlife Conservation Board, but it's going to be a great asset for the county, a well-used boat ramp on the Lower Smith River and excellent public access and long overdue for getting cleaned up. So really excited about this project and the possibilities of this getting to some closure in August. Dealing with some issues in Hauchi that we'll be addressing with the sheriff and the Big Rock Community Service District on Thursday. And then also met with our Committee for Agriculture, Environment, and Natural Resources with CSAC to discuss the upcoming legislative conference and issues that we're still dealing with with agriculture and force management, looking to bring some of the cultural burning aspects potentially into the conversation for the upcoming ledge conference since tribes seem to have a little easier time getting through the regulatory hurdles in order to do burning, which controls these massive fuel loads that not just the state of California is dealing with, but many throughout the nation are dealing with. So we're thinking about terming it, choose your smoke. Really, either we're gonna the smoke that we're going to be dealing with, we're going to generate ourselves when we're managing our fuels, or we're going to deal with these catastrophic wildfires that blanket the entire state for for months. So we're trying to to get through these. Also had a meeting of the North Coast Unified Air Quality Magic District, and then also attended with Supervisor Hemmingson, a meeting with Congressman Jared Huffman, which was a roundtable for the upcoming transportation infrastructure bill that passed the House, and he wanted to hear from us the priorities that we have here in Del Norte County. And I was very happy to hear that Last Chance Grade is still number one, not only for Congressman Huffman, not only for Del Norte County, but the other counties that joined us, both Trinity and Mendocino and Humboldt also said for them Last Chance Grade was number one. So our message has definitely done well at grabbing the attention and most importantly, any funding in dollars that will come come our way. Had a meeting with Elizabeth Croft with U.S. Commercial Service. And then also a meeting of the Del Norte Transportation Commission with both Supervisor Hemmingson and Supervisor Short. And Supervisor Short mentioned, very happy to be moving forward with traffic calming projects on one ninety-nine and Elk Valley Crossroads, and in addition, safety upgrades with turnpockets at our Dollar General store on Highway one-on-one. And as Supervisor Short mentioned, the meeting with Ricas and Takota last night with Meritoba and Chairman Fukuda and Kiyoshi Murakami, a great meeting, something that we'll probably end up doing more often. But one thing in their message that I was glad to see Supervisor Short take the lead on this from our side is what we could learn from the loss of life in Ricas and Takota associated with natural disasters. They're willing to give their top expert in the region to us to help share knowledge really about how we could save one life because that is really their mission. No loss of life in this type of natural disaster associated with tsunami. So we'll see how that comes together in these COVID times, but I'm hoping with the loosening of restrictions here in the in the U.S. and especially in California that we'll be able to get him over here personally to help educate our folks in our emergency management unit on these situations. Been dealing with tremendous amount of concerns associated with loss of insurance in our high fire severity areas like Gaski and how best to deal with this. People's rates have been going up two or three times, or they've been getting dropped completely. Now, there are companies that still are out there that do provide the insurance. However, you know, you gotta you gotta search for it, and there's got to be some other ways to address this. So working with the State Insurance Commissioner Lara and then other folks at the state specifically with Cal Fire to address some of the high fire high fire severity rating zones and ways we can approach this and model it to take into account either a river, a highway, fuel breaks that have been put in around Gaski as a way to reduce that risk. Those are things that we need to be talking about right now with our policymakers because we've got this perfect storm, for lack of a better term, that's created real issues for real people and owning a home in these beautiful areas like Gaski, Smith River, and Hauchi. So trying to deal with that, and then also getting closer to addressing issues for some constituents in the Birch Ocean View area. Really appreciate Randy Cooper's engagement on this. But bringing in Tim Cotter from Telespan Communications, he did the cell towers up the one ninety-nine corridor in O'Brien and I'll call your tunnel. But to bring cellular communications into the Birch Ocean View area, where cell communications right now are very bleak. And they're trying to work with folks in that community and even the Community Services District to locate a cell tower that will provide that service that's needed. So happy we're we're making some progress there, and that's my report, Chairman.
Thank you. Well, as Supervisor Starkey pointed out, inherited I inherited one of her problems that she showed on me. No, I just, it's it's not a problem that I was very aware of at Point Saint George. I had several meetings with Fish and Wildlife, the sheriff, county staff, and I think we've come up with a solution. Alan Winogrotto did a fine rendering of what we were kind of looking at, and the private property owners out there were in agreement that they would be happy with with something like that. So we're going to try to do some improvements out there and see if we can't make that work. I had a Nortech meeting, which is a Northern Rural Training and Employment Consortium meeting. We had a quorum this time, so we're able to take care of all the business that we should have taken at the previous meeting because we didn't have a quorum, so that took up a considerable amount of the time. I had a meeting with Amberware and some youth that are involved with the vaping issues in the county and are later going to give us a little presentation. As Supervisor Howard mentioned, Congressman Huffman put on a webinar about funding opportunities with the transportation bill. So we're looking forward to to moving along with that. Had a meeting with county council and some staff and one of our insurance agencies over some issues. Had a North Coast Fishing Cable Committee meeting, which is right now, they're working on two communication cables that should be completed in August or September in Eureka area, just off of Samoa. They've already laid the cable, one of the cables from from that facility out to the shelf and in sometime in July or August, I think they're going to start laying the other cable out to the shelf, and then they're going to pick up the first cable and take it off to Guam or Singapore or someplace. Anyway. There's two two different places. One of them, I think, is going to Singapore, and one of them is going to Guam. So those should be up and running in the very near future. Had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. Employments are up, but not to the level that we'd like to see them, so we're continuing to work on that. And as Supervisor Howard said, we had a Natural Resource Goal Committee meeting, a discussion of the future of Saxon's Boat Ramp, which looks very promising. So we're going to move on with that. I did go through the drive-through fundraiser for the Canine Program and got myself a smoked tri-tip sandwich, which was very good. So hopefully there was a lot of participation there. And as Supervisor Howard and Short mentioned, we had a local transportation commission meeting. I won't go into that anymore, and I had an agenda review, and that was it for me. Okay, so at this time, we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Chair, can we just make a note on item number ten? There was a typo in the board report. The agreement actually goes until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, not twenty twenty-two, as was stated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
A second. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there any public comment on consent agenda items only?
Actually, I have two of them. Number two, you're going to give one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for to place someone in a program in my belief, Sonoma County for sex offenders. I gotta tell you, I mean, that's a lot of money, and I appreciate what you're trying to do and everything, but the bottom line is this. A sex offender is like anybody with any kind of addiction or gambling problem. You're never going to cure them. It's forever. I don't care what you do. I don't care if you cut off all their body parts. And they're never going to change, and they're always going to offend. So and that hundred and twenty thousand doesn't include the medical or transportation. So and the reason I say that is because a roommate told me himself, he was glad he was in prison because he knows that he would offend again. He didn't want to hurt anybody, but he couldn't help himself. So you folks need to keep that in mind when you're dealing with these types of folks. They're the best treatment for them is, you know, permanent out-of-society jail. And number six, Miss Miss Mix is quoted saying she's only going to prosecute eight cases this year. So when you're receiving funds for violence against women, we can't even get the sheriff's department to provide rape kits for women who have been raped. And you folks appointed him. We didn't get to vote. I'm tired of getting these people in office who are do-nothing people, and in the meantime, your public is suffering. Okay, this is outrageous. And it happens everywhere, and we can show our challenges and say, well, it happens everywhere. It doesn't have to happen here. We need a stronger sheriff. We need a DA that wants to do her job. This place isn't safe anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other further public comment?
Chair, I'm not seeing any online.
On the consent agenda items only. Sorry, just on the consent agenda, not public comment. I'm sorry. Seeing no further public comment on the consent agenda. Bring it back to the board. Any further discussion? Kylie, would you please pull a vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay. Got a couple of minutes yet, so we'll move on to the budget transfers. Items fifteen and sixteen.
Make a motion. We approve the budget transfer zero one dash zero one zero and zero two dash zero one.
Second motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on these budget transfers?
I have none on the line, Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the board. Any further discussion? Kylie, would you please pull a vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay. So we've got a couple of minutes.
Pretty good.
Just turned.
Right on. Okay, it is eleven or ten twenty-five. Time for public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Teresa Schnecker. I'm an IHS worker. I am a single mom with an adult son who I'm trying to keep out of the facilities. He wants to stay home. He wants to He wants to be in the community. In fact, he is active in the community. He volunteers at the shelter, the animal shelter. He does victim witness. He shreds paper for them. And we spend our money locally. So with our wages that we get that are should be increased that we're asking for to make it. We would love to stay here and I'm also a board member of the Regional Center. I'm also on the board for the IHSS and also for our union. So please remember that we are reliable, strong people that do a service for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Linda Sutter County. I think you should really applaud these people and give them a raise, especially since y'all gave yourselves a five to twelve percent raise and the department heads. I mean, we don't need two hundred thousand dollar incomes to be working in Donut County. So it's really shameful, whatever. Someone has to work an entire month just to pay the rent. My daughter works for the county. She paid, she worked an entire month to pay her rent. So she gets death benefits from her oldest son because his daddy died when he was five and that's what she lives on. So whatever we put our county folks at the bottom of the barrel, but give ourselves handsome raises, that's disgusting. Number one. Number two, the Tri Agency issue. It's my understanding that Mr. Short and Mr. Howard used to sit on the board of Tri Agency.
Still do.
Huh? This is public county, county. Is this not public comment? Okay, I don't know what the interruption was.
Stating that they still sit on Tri.
Oh, you still do. So that's a conflict of interest as far as I'm concerned. Okay, just so you know, I wouldn't be wasting time, you know. And finally, there was an incident in our county, once again, with the Sheriff's Department. And you have deputies that are giving advice to the public that do not know what they're doing because they're brand new in the department and they're untrained. This is a complete safety issue for public. If you don't understand that brandishing a weapon with somebody's while yelling and screaming in an anger aggressive tone is against the law and a deputy tells you, well, she didn't point the gun at you. She's, she needs some training. This is outrageous. We gotta stop this. We're professionals here, right? Let's think professionally. Thank you.
And on a less fault. And I'm very, very unhappy taxpayer and I've got five key points to go over. The first being the unmitigated gall of the four of you to raise salaries and benefits at this time is just unreasonable. The light of Joe Serena telling the public that the one percent sales tax would never be used for salaries and benefits, which I now believe is a lie, I'm helping to repeal the sales tax. The third point is the twenty-five million score bond Citizens Oversight Committee is worse than a joke. The chair, the incompetent chairman, Steve Lyon, and the majority of the board members sitting on the COC rubber stamp everything instead of looking out for the taxpayer, which is their job. Because of that, a cease and desist was sent to the COC. No response was received. Therefore, a writ of mandate was filed with Superior Court. Now, when a lawsuit is filed, those papers need to be served on each of the board members. Five of those board members took their service willingly, politely, and professionally. And then I was asked to serve the sixth board member, Jessica Curry, out in Smith River. I approached her house and she came out with a rifle and started screaming at me. I was in fear for my life. There was no way I was gonna hand these papers to that woman. I threw them on the ground and got out of there. Now let's get to the next point, the sheriff's office. I went to make a report. I met with Deputy Slough. This morning I met with Diana Stanley to pick up the copy of that report. Instead, she hands me a one-page incident report by the dispatcher. It has nothing about Jessica Curry brandishing a rifle, nothing about me being in fear for my life. Something is dramatically, dramatically wrong. And I'm talking with attorneys and other people. These actions are illegal. I wasn't trespassing. I was there to serve paperwork on a lawsuit. And I'll get back to my first point about raising your salaries and benefits. And that is that I sent him a neat email. I think it was before year leading up, January twenty-fifth, where you took that action. Saying, please don't do this in effect. And I would like to request that that email be made a part of the public record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Hello. My name is Sri Ederback and I am a caregiver for IHSS. We caregivers are the backbone of the community. The work we do to keep people in their homes is vital to Crescent City. Please value us and agree to livable wages that speaks to the work that we do. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
My name is Barbara Moran and I am also an SEIU member. I'm a caregiver. I work sixty-six hours a week to support myself and my family. I recently bought a home, two vehicles. Like we, our wages are a little ridiculous considering some of the things that we do when Walmart workers make more than us. I take care of a seventy-eight-year-old recent amputee lady. I do her PT and OT because physical therapy did not come in. I taught her to walk. Like we have, we do a twenty-four-hour care when some of our clients are gonna pass. And there is no, what is it called? We don't have hospice here and we're legally not allowed to stay twenty-four hours, so we donate our time. We've had two clients recently pass, me and my friend, and we keep them for eight years or till they pass and we hold their hand and watch them go. And we do not get paid to do that. And we do it anyway. I mean, these are your grandparents, your aunts, your uncles. It might not be yours yet. Someday it might be you. And I'm assuming that when you get to that point in your life, that you would want responsible people doing it. And we can't get more workers because we don't make enough money. Okay, when Walmart makes more than we do, they go to Walmart. We have CNAs from our community working at Walmart right now instead of at the combo because they make more money working at Walmart. So please take that into consideration when you're looking at our pay increase. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Good morning, Barbara. My name is Latisha Sanchez. I'm with SEIU Local Twenty-Fifteen. Crescent City is actually one of the only places I've ever thought about moving, moving from Red Bluff. I do live in Red Bluff, but Crescent City is the only place I've ever been to that I feel like is a beautiful enough place for me to want to leave where I've been my whole life. But I have friends here. I do have family here and I do visit quite often. And like my sister Teresa was saying, the money that these caregivers get, it stays in this, in the community. They spend it here. They don't go vacation. They don't go to the, send their money off to different islands to invest in things. Their money is spent here. The IHSS program is, and the way it's funded is very unique. No other program is going to bring back money into the community with the portion that the state pays. And it just doesn't. There's no other program that's like this. It is truly an investment. Our caregivers worked during the pandemic and kept this county afloat. Right? Because their money, they were still bringing in money because they still were essential workers. They were still on the front lines. They were still working. They're the only workers that did not go unemployment, right? They still continue to work and still continue to spend their money in this county and kept you guys afloat during this pandemic. We keep seeing spikes. Our caregivers are still the ones working. Please value the work that they do and really think about it. Look into the the funding. If it's new to you, some people are newer faces on this board. Some people have been here for a long time. But let's look at the funding and how it's, how it's appropriated and how much it benefits this county to give these caregivers an increase. Like she said, they work sometimes twenty-four hours. I was a caregiver for ten years. I still do it occasionally for my dad when his caregivers are sick or they catch COVID or they are quarantined. So I still am invested in in caregiving. This is a lifelong thing. These people become your family. They depend on you for every single thing. And so they're the backbone of the community. No one's exempt from a car accident. No one's exempt from becoming old. Everybody is gonna need caregivers. We can't let this job go waste. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Thank you, Chairman Hemmingson, members of board. My name is Brandon Bieber. It is with great disappointment, I stand before you today, expressing my dissatisfaction with your leadership and your complacency with the degradation of our community. I have three examples of your lack of leadership and I only have three minutes, so I'll try to make this quick. I see you finally updated your agenda to represent the most current health ordinance. Only took you two and a half months, so good job. As you guys should know, it threatens to separate families for not wearing a mask. It's unlawful. Are we a community of laws? Is it a law? Then have me arrested. You can't because it's unlawful. Goes to prove the lawlessness and lack of respect this board has for our community and its citizens. A person is left to speculate why you would continue to intimidate your constituents, even as you know, no one has been cited or arrested for not wearing a mask in the whole country. Is it greed? Is it your desire for power? Is it ignorance? Regardless, I request the board fire Dr. Stutz and rescind the public health ordinance at once. Secondly, I wanted to share my disappointment on the board's approval to give county department heads administration positions raises. What has the county achieved to justify the increase in salaries? I see a lot of things not happening. A lot of departments canceling services and constant reminders of how our community is getting worse by the day. You know, we have about seventy county employees that make over a hundred thousand dollars annually. Not bad for one of the poorest communities in the state. This selfish leadership you display and promote will only hinder our community's future economic opportunities. It'll escalate inflation and will require greater expenditures of tax revenue. Lastly, I'd like to make a formal complaint against the Department of Health and Human Services. Even as this board recently allocated over two and a half million dollars to DHHS, this is a failed department and should be defunded. I will say it's good Director Heather Snow is resigning. The Board of Supervisors should have broader goals than allowing our county to be a welfare county. Call it a nanny county if you want, but it's government overreach. You're not helping anyone with these social services, but you're rewarding bad habits. I respectfully request this board put on the agenda to drastically cut funding for DHHS and allocate those funds for Crescent City Police Department and Bill North Show's Department.
Thank you. Thank you.
Twenty-one vacancies the DHHS has.
Thank you.
Disgraceful government overreach. If you can't step up and actively promote the county,
Thank you.
you should step down.
Chairman, point of clarification on two items that came before us in public comment.
Yeah, go ahead. I was gonna say the same thing, but go ahead.
I need to ask Neil. Neil, we heard twice that the board has given itself raises. Is, did we give ourselves raises and I just didn't, wasn't here for the vote or?
No. None of the raises given before the board.
So there, there was a former supervisor that published an article that said that we did vote ourselves raises and that is absolutely false. So do some checking if you would. When you get up here and start you know, railing on us for doing something that we didn't do, it's, it's fine. We'll, we'll take it, but you know, that's that's pretty bad. Just because you don't know your research.
And then the second point of clarification, and let's certainly welcome Ms. Westfall or Ms. Sutter to come meet with me and and Neil or any one of us board members on the expenditure of Measure R funds and how it was budgeted and allocated, because this seems to be an issue. So please, Ms. Sutter, come talk to me about it. My door is open. Call me. You've called me multiple times. Call me. We'll sit down and we'll discuss Measure R and how it was budgeted and allocated because I, I just, when, when we say things in public that aren't factual, I want the facts to be out there. So you and I are on the same page. Because we do have a budget. It was passed and approved on how these funds are expended. And I think that clarity is needed, so there's not the wrong information out there. I'd appreciate your time on that. And bring, and you could bring Ms. Westfall too, please.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you bet. Yeah, and the only other thing I would like to say is I appreciate everyone being that is wearing a mask, being respectful of everyone else. Because there seems to be some disagreement there and I'm glad that ninety-nine point nine nine percent of everybody in here is wearing a mask. So we appreciate that. Okay, so now we're gonna move on. Well, is there any more public comment? Or one more public comment?
Hello, board. My name is Clayton Reposa. I am also staffed with the Union SEIU. And I just wanted to come up and talk a little bit about the IHSS workers and some of what that gross government overreach gets you. These IHSS workers are oftentimes completely overlooked as first responders. I can't tell you how many times I've talked to IHSS workers and they just casually mention that they saved their client's life. And I'm like, wait, stop. What happened? Like, oh yeah, I walked in, my client was passed on the ground and I was the first person to call an ambulance. Or, oh yeah, there was, I live in an area where there's a lot of fires. There was a fire coming and no one was gonna go check on my client, so I went out there and got them. Diabetic clients who were, weren't checking their blood sugar really terrible. They, they save these people's lives all the time and they are making barely above minimum wage. And then as my coworker Latisha was saying, the state and the federal government chip in the mass majority of the money for this program. So any benefits or wages that you give, the state and the federal government covers most of that. And then, of course, these folks, you know, they spend it all in the local area. You know, where else are they gonna spend it? So you do recover some of your cost in taxes. And for that, you're getting a very dedicated workforce who is doing, you know, a job much more difficult than what they're hired to do. And I just wanted to make that clear. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, thank you. Anything, Kylie?
Chair, I have nothing on the line.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna close the public comment period and we're gonna move on to our ten thirty timed item, which is a COVID update. Is Dr. Stutz on?
Yes, he is, Chair.
No worries. Have a great day.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Have a give you guys a brief update for the past couple of weeks. Sorry, I wasn't able to be here for the last meeting. So our, our new COVID cases peaked a couple of weeks ago from January twenty-fourth to January thirtieth. We had four hundred new cases during that week. And that was followed by a twenty-five percent decrease in cases for the, for last week, the week of January. And that was followed by a 25% decrease in cases, uh, for the, for last week, uh, the week of January 31st to February 6th, we had a total of 257 new cases. So that's a really good sign that, um, this current Omicron surge has peaked and is on its way down. We've had, uh, two deaths in 2022. Uh, both of these individuals were in their eighties. That's a significant decrease compared to, uh, what we had last year in terms of our hospitalization versus, uh, how many of those hospitalized succumbed to the, the disease. Uh, hospitalized right now, uh, we have about five individuals. Um, one of those is in the ICU and four are just, uh, floor patients. And, uh, uh, for our vaccination, we have about 54.8, just shy of 55% um, ages 12 and older, uh, fully vaccinated. We have about 13% of our age group, five to 11, vax, uh, vaccinated. So, uh, just briefly, uh, I want to mention that, uh, state, uh, state's masking, uh, order is set to expire on the 15th. Um, at that time, uh, the guidance will revert to the guidances that were in place, uh, just prior to the holidays. Um, so universally indoor masking will go away and will only remain, uh, for sectors of the economy, uh, that it was in place for at that time, which would be healthcare, uh, schools and other certain segments of the economy, skill nursing, skill nursing facilities. So, uh, that would, that'll happen on the 15th, which is next week. And along with that, uh, I'll be rescinding my order, uh, that I put in place before the holidays as well. That's about all I got. What questions do you have?
Yeah, Supervisor Howard has a question.
Yeah, the, um, there's obviously been a lot of discussion, not only locally, but statewide, nationwide on the masking mandates, the executive order that here in the state of California is put in place for it. But I would love you to address the issue with children. We're, we're in this mess and, and I can't describe it as anything but a big mess. Where basically the health of our children and especially associated with masking, we, we can't find any scientific evidence, at least I haven't been able to find any scientific evidence to date, that shows this being an effective tool to stave off the transmission of, of the virus. In addition, um, we have a population of young people in our schools that have been disproportionately impacted with their education, their social learning, behavioral environments. And yet they're, um, they're, they're being placed in a situation where they, they're basically being now, even though this masking requirement will be dropped for the rest of the state where they have to mask up. And I'm, I'm curious, as we hear some of this changing for other states, but not necessarily the state of California, where are you at on this? Because, I mean, this is, this is, and I have this discussion with my wife constantly, this is disproportionately impacting our youth. Uh, arguably a portion of our population, which is 99.9%, not going to come down with something that's going to be debilitating or going to kill them. And so, not to weigh on the fears of the public, but when are we going to change this dynamic? Because it does not seem to be ending, especially for our youth, to getting back to some kind of normalcy where we take their education more seriously than wearing a mask at a school site. I know it's an open-ended comment slash question, but love you to address that more with us and some of these concerns that I continue to hear from the community and then argue at a national level.
Yeah, um, I'd be happy to talk at length, um, about that subject. Uh, firstly, um, I don't agree with you that there is no scientific evidence that, that facial coverings, uh, protect from transmission. There's lots of scientific evidence. We wouldn't be harping on it, um, at the state and county levels, um, in public health if it wasn't effective. There is evidence that it does prevent transmission, um, on a population wide basis, as well as, you know, on a microscale scientific basis in terms of, you know, analyzing viral particles coming out of people's respiratory tracts. So I don't agree with you that there, there isn't evidence. There is, there's lots of significant evidence that on a population-wide basis does prevent transmission. I also don't agree that this is in some way harming our children, um, or singling them out in some way. I think it's an effort to try as hard as we can to get kids back into school using measures that we know are effective to reduce transmission and still be able to get them in school without disrupting their learning environment. So that, that's just my opinion on that subject. You know, do we need to continue using masks in schools? Well, you know, I think that remains to be seen. I, I would like to get rid of them too. Everybody seems to hate them so much, even though they're such a simple thing to do to protect other people. But, um, you know, with this current, uh, Omicron surge and how, you know, uh, how low the case fatality rates are and how our treatment options have improved for COVID, our understanding about the disease has improved. I think, yeah, um, there are discussions going on at the state and, uh, uh, level as well as with local health officers uh, about how we can go about removing these restrictions that people don't like. So, um, recently you, you may have, uh, heard a discussion of, um, uh, of our transitioning our COVID pandemic response to a less of an emergency mode response and that those discussions are ongoing with local health officers about um, what the next phase of the pandemic response should be.
Now, I appreciate you opining on this. Obviously, there's differences of opinion and we get those expressed to us constantly and the, at least the science that I heard at the beginning of this entire pandemic said the masks aren't effective, yet we still have these surges in our community, even though we're under a masking mandate here. Um, I'm just, I'm trying to grapple with this and the impact, especially on our youth and their education. And when, when do you see it as our public health officer, when do you see this coming to an end? Getting back to some sense of normalcy, especially since a great deal of our population has been vaccinated, especially since a great deal of our population has now been infected with it and they have antibodies. When do you see Donar County getting back to some formal normalcy?
How, how does a mask protect you? Yeah, we're, we're, are we still seeing surges, even though many people are adopting these, these interventions, things like that? But you got to see from our, our perspective, from our perspective, we're not expecting to prevent any surges. We're, we're expecting to decrease the number of people that end up with the disease and, and in a hospital, right? We don't expect these interventions to, to protect us 100%. We're looking on a huge population-wide basis. Every intervention that we, that, that we enact, that we, we have evidence for, uh, we can see that in the numbers. We can tell that people, uh, that people, what, what happens when people get vaccinated, a large swath of the population. It doesn't prevent a surge, just prevents that many more people from ending up in a hospital. It just decreases the percentage by a few points. And that's what we're looking for. We're not looking for an absolute cure. It's not possible.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from board members?
I, I have just one quick comment. Um, so Dr. Stutz, have you been following, uh, the doctors from UCSF? And their push to the governor to, um, declare this more of an endemic and not a pandemic anymore? Have you been following that?
Sorry, um, did my comment previous get cut off there?
Have you been following the UCSF doctors and their, their kind of push to the governor, to the state, that this is becoming more of an epidemic and not so much a pandemic anymore? And if you have been following that, do, are you weighing in on that? Do you believe, are you following that? Are you believing that? Or, or where do you stand on that? Because I'm just kind of curious. These are some top doctors in the state and they're, they're urging the governor to, to relook at the labeling of this as being a pandemic to more of an epidemic. And I just wanted to see if you've, where you lay.
Yeah, that, that's what I was kind of in the middle of talking about as an answer to the previous question. Um, so I am part of those meetings. There's joint meetings between, um, Texas, the US of America as well as UCSF on Saturdays. And I'm a part of those where they discuss, um, you know, that very topic. And yes, I, I agree, uh, this is becoming endemic. Um, and, uh, we should turn off the emergency response, in my opinion. As soon as we can keep the case fatality rate close to that, uh, of what flu is every year. You know, every year we have somewhere between 20,000 and 60,000 influenza deaths, um, in our country. And so far with COVID, it's been more like half a million a year. So if we can reduce that number to somewhere on the order of where, where influenza is, um, you know, and if we can demonstrate that most people have either been vaccinated or been exposed to the virus, uh, and have natural immunity, then yeah, um, it's become endemic and it's, um, it's, we should ratchet back our emergency response. But, you know, if that virus is still impacting our hospital systems in a really negative way, that's still something that we need to do something about, right? Um, I can tell you from experience over the last two weeks of working in, in, uh, at Sutter Coast in the emergency department, even though our hospitalizations were low, we never really broke through 10 hospitalizations at once, um, for the Omicron surge. Uh, the emergency department was heavily impacted at, at times. Last weekend, we had to call in a second emergency physician to come help me out in the emergency department because we were so overloaded with people who were waiting to be admitted or transferred elsewhere for various reasons. But part of the reason was that we had so many patients showing up with COVID. And so, um, yeah, I, I'm in agreement with, with, with what they're saying. Absolutely. Um, it's just how, how safely to back off of these interventions, which I will reiterate, we know do work. Masking and social distancing and vaccination. And I, and I really want to point out that just because you've been vaccinated or just because you had COVID a year ago, that doesn't really mean anything at this, at this late stage of the game, right? Um, we're going to start coming out with vaccinations that are like a yearly thing, right? A booster shot, basically, um, just like for, for influenza. The people in the hospital, the, the four individuals in the hospital right now, two of them were unvaccinated. The other three were vaccinated. However, their last vaccine dose was over a year ago, or roughly about a year ago. So that shows you right there that this, this immunity is not necessarily long-lived. The virus is going to mutate. You're going to need a booster dose. Um, so just to reiterate that.
Thank you, Doctor. Supervisor Short.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Stutz, if I could weigh in here, um, your comment a bit ago in answer to Supervisor Howard's question was that, we're not hurting our kids. And I, I wanted to kind of give you my opinion on that. Um, I have a, somebody close to me that works with the schools and they've just done an assessment on, uh, on the kids and to see where they're, they're testing. She works in a seventh and eighth grade classroom and found that the kids, uh, are testing at a fifth and sixth grade level. We continually hear how little our children are affected by this virus, yet we are continuing with, quarantine mandates for our kids that, um, classrooms are literally almost half full across the district. And it seems like we're continuing to ignore the fact that, that these, our children are not partially affected by this virus. But yet we are continuing to kick them out of school because they sat close to somebody, um, even though they are showing no symptoms. And we're affecting their education, their mental health and among, you know, other things. Some could say that what we're doing to our children is criminal. And I wonder why we're ignoring the fact that our children are so, so, so ill affected, so not affected by this virus. Why do we continue to, to ignore that fact? And why do we continue to kick our kids out of school? Because, um, they were, you know, they sat next to somebody in class that, that comes up positive. And still, um, you know, even though they don't have symptoms, why, why do we continue to ignore this? That's, I guess that's what my question is.
Yeah, so I have a few comments about that. Um, thanks for asking that. Um, so I'll reiterate, I'll reiterate again, because I've said this many times, the reason that we're intervening in schools is not necessarily to protect the kids themselves from COVID, right? Just hear me when I say this for the last time, you guys, we're doing it to protect their elderly loved ones who are susceptible to the disease, right? Because if they pass it to somebody in their family who is not going to survive, is going to die of COVID, then they got it in school and we didn't do anything about that. That's what we're trying to protect there, okay? It's not necessarily that we're trying to protect kids from COVID, right? Trying to protect their families from COVID. That was the intention, alright? So, and, and, and when I say that we're not harming kids, I don't mean that their education hasn't been harmed, it absolutely has during this pandemic process. Absolutely. I 100% agree with that. It's the facial coverings and the vaccination that are not harming our kids, okay? Those things are not specifically harming our kids. I don't believe that, alright? I do believe that their, their, their education has been impacted, absolutely.
Thank you, Doctor. Uh, I'm gonna, uh, you, you've answered, uh, all of the questions that I have and I appreciate that. I'm going to open this up for public comment. Uh, now for you, Doctor, and what I'd like for you to do, if, if the question's already been asked and answered, please don't ask it again. And I don't want to get into a back and forth with Dr. Stutz, so ask all your questions. And Dr. Stutz, I would ask you to make notes if, if they have more than one or two questions, uh, that you would make notes of what the questions are and then we can answer them after they're done with their comment. Thank you. So public comment, please.
Linda Sutter, back in October during the, um, um, school board meeting, it came out that, uh, Dr. Stutz, that, uh, uh, school district, Etna, uh, Etta, I can't re, exactly remember the name, but it's in your area where you live, refused to go by your mandate. And I was wondering if you could elaborate that to our, why they would refuse such a mandate from you, Dr. Stutz? If you could please, uh, explain that to our board of supervisors. Thank you.
Yeah, I can, I can explain that pretty easily. Um, so I actually, it wasn't, um, there was a school in, in a school district in Etna that elected not to follow the state guidelines, the state, um, facial covering guidelines, not my guidelines. Uh, it's not that they elected not to follow it. They, they, they chose to not enforce it because it was becoming difficult for their school district to, uh, to create a constructive learning environment in, uh, at those schools there, because there were so many people that did not agree with, uh, facial, the facial covering statewide order, um, that parents were unfortunately dropping their kids off at school, refusing to put masks on them and then asking their children to refuse to wear masks and then refusing to pick their children up from school, uh, when the school called them and asked them to please do so. So they were basically dumping their children at, at school without a mask and refusing to pick them up. So it was creating a huge, um, uh, amount of chaos, uh, at those school systems, um, during the day, because it was something like 80% of the students, um, or more. And so they chose to, despite my advice, they chose to not enforce the, the facial coverings order, uh, at that time. I did advise them that this really opens them up to, um, really this falls into the jurisdiction of, uh, for example, um, Cal OSHA. And if a, a teacher were to become ill at school, uh, because state, um, state guidelines were not being enforced, um, then that's a Cal OSHA issue. So, um, that's, that's the thing about all of these, quote, quote mandates with these guidelines, right? These guidelines from the, the California Department of Public Health or from our local health department from me. And if they aren't followed, um, then it really opens the entity up for legal action. If there's some sort of event that happens and they get trade and liability gets traced back to that entity, um, there's a case for liability lawsuit there. Um, that's really what we're talking about here, as with everything, you know, in government and, and, um, and, uh, the legal system is we're opening ourselves up to liability if we don't follow these, these guidelines.
And Dr. Stutz, uh, you broke up a little bit on that, uh, on the answer. I think we've got the gist of, of what you were saying, but maybe if you turn your video off, even though we would love to see your lovely face, uh, maybe if you turn your video off, then your, your audio would come through better. Is there, is there any other, uh, uh, questions, uh, or comments to, uh, Dr. Stutz?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hemison. Good morning, Dr. Stutz. If I could just reiterate what Board Member Howard requested. And could you please provide that evidence that our county is doing better off than counties that don't have masking mandates? We have some of the most restrictive mandates in the nation and it'd be great if you could provide those statistics. Also curious, when was the last time you've seen a Del Norte patient in a Del Norte clinician setting?
Are you done?
No. Oh, all questions? Oh, because I've got a few questions. I was wondering when the last time you were in Sutter Health was in Crescent City? What the current situation is at Sutter Health, how you get updated about that? I was wondering about one of our recent deaths, if it was true that one of the males who passed away had double pneumonia, was a smoker, yet still got a COVID death. I was wondering if a person with terminal cancer was in the hospital and ended up with a positive COVID test, is that going to be a COVID for mortality? Also, if I was, if I had both my shots in, let's say, February of twenty-one, would I be considered fully vaccinated? Not likely, and I wish that the county would remove the propaganda hub from its website because most of the information on there is either inflated or embellished. So if you could just respond to a couple of those comments.
I still think you should be fired.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can respond to some of those questions. I don't know why it's relevant, but the last time I saw a patient at Sutter Coast was sometime on the night of the thirty-first of January because that's when I worked last. I'm scheduled to work tomorrow night and the following night as well in the emergency department. Let's see, the evidence for masking in counties that have masking requirements and counties that don't. Those comparative studies have, you can find actually on the CDC website, part of their morbidity and mortality reports. There's been a number of observational studies that have compared states and counties within states that have masking mandates versus counties that don't. And there is some statistical significance there demonstrating a benefit as well as a number of actually hard science studies that demonstrate that masks can physically block viral particles and things of that nature. If you're interested in seeing those studies, I of course have a huge list compiled of those studies. And I did try to include studies that didn't show any effect from masking. So I tried to be as unbiased as possible in reading some of that, some of that literature as always, so that there's no selection bias on my part. But for the most part, those studies do show a small effect on viral transmission and blocking viral particle transmission. I can send those studies to you, Brandon, if you send us an email and you can read through them. It's a lot of material, though, to go through. But I'm happy to send it to or anyone else who wants to read it. The recent deaths, I'm absolutely sure that the deaths that we've had this year, individuals in their eighties are probably people who had comorbid conditions such as, you know, being a smoker or having, you know, congestive heart failure or COPD or or heart disease. I don't doubt that at all. Obviously, those conditions put you at much higher risk of dying from COVID. And then one of the parts of your comment was, how do we classify COVID deaths as somebody with terminal cancer going to be considered a COVID death if they come into the hospital, get COVID positive and die in the hospital? And was it the, was it the, their chronic condition and they had terminal cancer? Or was it COVID? Well, I mean, that really is a philosophical question that speaks to how we define deaths in the first place, even outside of COVID. We see people with many comorbid conditions come into the hospital all the time and they die. But there's a penultimate cause of what causes them to die, right? So even just because they have terminal cancer doesn't mean that they're not going to die from a pneumonia, right? The end of their life has to happen somehow. And it's the end of their life that we try to decide what was it that was the penultimate cause of their death, right? Terminal cancer doesn't kill you just because it's cancer. It kills you because it causes you to have a pulmonary embolus that blocks blood flow to your lungs, right? And then we would say that they died of a pulmonary embolus, right? It kills you because it ruins your immune system. You can't fight off an infection, so you might die of a pneumonia, which is bacteria clogging up your lungs and making it difficult for you to breathe. And so we would say that that person died of a pneumonia. But really, they died because of their cancer, right? Their cancer that caused them to have some penultimate thing that killed them, right? So, yeah, you know, do we classify that death as COVID or cancer? It's really hard to say, you know, because obviously if you have COPD or you have a pulmonary embolus or you have lung disease, you are a smoker, you have heart disease, you have reduced reserve to put up a fight against what COVID does to your body. Really, the way I look at it is when there's a question, has this person actually died of COVID? Was COVID the ultimate cause of their death? I try to decide, would they have lived if they hadn't had COVID? How long, much longer would they have lived if they hadn't had COVID? If they, if, if, if in the documentation or in my case experience with that patient, it looks like that patient would have lived a lot longer or, you know, if they hadn't had COVID, then I would say that their death was COVID-related, right? If, however, let's say they came into the hospital and they had what looks to be a heart attack or congestive heart failure, exacerbation, but they've otherwise been completely well. They haven't had any sore throat or cough or any respiratory symptoms. They just had, they came in for a completely different reason and they happened to turn up positive on their COVID test. And let's say they died during that hospitalization. Well, you know, that is probably going to make it back to my desk and there's probably going to be a question. Should we consider this a COVID death? If I don't see any corroborating evidence that COVID was the primary instigator of their death, then I'm not likely to call it a COVID death. And that's happened a number of times during this pandemic, both in Siskiyou County and Del Norte County. I constantly am seeing cases where I feel like either the coroner or the primary care physician has overcalled something and called it a COVID death when I don't think it's a COVID death. And so we go back and forth and I try to find as much evidence as I can because I really want the numbers to be accurate and we all kind of do want the numbers to be accurate, right? So we can get an adequate handle on how exactly how deadly COVID is. So, yeah, it's a philosophical question sometimes. And really, it's left to the physician's heuristic instinct about what they see is their corroborating evidence when they're reviewing cases like this. So, yeah, is it a gray area? Of course it is. Just all of medicine is a gray area as is all of life, right?
Thank you. Are there any other public comment questions?
Chair, I have a few hands raised online. Sally, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic. Sally, are you there? I'm going to go ahead and move to the next chair.
Okay.
Give me one second. Tanya, you're on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Hello, I'm Tanya Piercey. I live in the county. I just have a question specifically related to the Etna schools. So, so we have a school who has pretty much refused to follow the guidelines. And so I was curious how that actually affected the children. I mean, how many, what percentage of children actually got COVID out of that school? Or teachers? Or, you know, what's the bigger picture than just the fact that they, you know, didn't follow the rules? What's the outcome? Is my question.
Yeah, that's a great question, actually. Thank you for asking that question, Tanya. The data from those schools is constantly being compiled by the California Department of Education and on a county level, on a state level. So those questions we'll be able to answer, you know, probably sometime in the next year. We'll be able to see what effect the, you know, adherence to masking had on various school districts and things like that. Those are called observational studies that are part of, they're part of evidenced-based medicine, right? And how we determine what kind of interventions work and what don't. So, and they take quite some time to compile and crunch those numbers and then compare them to controls, right? To see if there was any difference. So hopefully we will know the answer to that, you know, probably after the pandemic's over.
Thank you.
Kylie, who else we got?
Sally, you are on. Sally, Serena, you just need to unmute your mic. I'm going to move to the next chair. Annie, you are on.
Hi, Annie Neemer. I have a couple of questions. You said masks are helping slow the spread and I completely disagree with that. It seems that there's a similar bell curve across all three outbreaks. And, and yet the kids in school, sitting right next to each other, touching each other, touching their masks, it's not helping the children. You're persecuting our children. People, the adults in this community have decided whether they're going to wear a mask or not, regardless of your public health directive and your arbitrary fifty-five percent number. But you're persecuting the children where the schools have all experienced the COVID outbreak, where all the children have been absent for two, three weeks. It's gone through for what, six weeks now? And so the kids get to go back and be yelled at by, literally yelled at by aides in school and teachers, nagged at, not reading facial expressions, kids talking about how they're having trouble breathing, but they still must wear masks because it doesn't make them die. I mean, this is what children are going through. And it's okay to make subject children to go through all this to hopefully save elderly people or other people who have comorbidities to persecute a whole section for the minority? I just, I am not understanding anymore. People are totally able and capable and are making their own choices regardless of your directives. And yet you continue to persecute them. Is there a real justification outside of maybe the masks slow the spread because it didn't help with the spread in the schools?
The only thing I can say to that is that your opinion that it didn't help is based on your observation and it's not compared with any other district where there was no masking occurring. So I can only tell you that you can't, that's not scientific. That's not a scientific way of looking at it. If I didn't think that they helped, then I wouldn't recommend them, I'm telling you right now. And you can't compare one district to itself. That's not how scientific studies are done. You can compare one district to itself in two different conditions, right? Masking or no masking. But in this observational type of situation, it's very difficult. Yes, it is very difficult to tell which of these interventions are working on such a small population basis. You can't just look at one school and decide that you think it's not working because you're not comparing that school to anything else, right? That's all I can say to that.
A nation. I don't know, the nation, children, death rates across the nation, across the world. That doesn't matter.
I don't understand your question. Do you have a question?
You say it's observational for our district, but it's not just our district. This isn't, it is, it is an observation. Yes, the coast, California, Oregon, Washington, and the mask mandates are still in place. Well, most of the nation does not have to have them. So am I comparing our district to another state and the control? No, I'm not. I am specifically referencing our school. But to say that they are working.
And I am telling you that when you look at the data and do that comparison between our county or county, you know, counties that have a mask mandate and good adherence to that and counties that don't, the data suggests that they do work. I'm telling you, I can send you the articles, just like I can send them to Brandon or anyone else who wants them and you can review them yourselves. The impact is small. Yes, it's probably less than ten percent. But the impact of wearing a facial covering is there. And I'm just telling you, that's what I see in the data. That's what public health officers see in the data. You can choose to believe it or not. You don't have to. But I'm just telling you, that's what we see in the data when we look nationwide. Otherwise, I wouldn't.
And so your data is saying, you're saying ten percent are helped, but so ninety percent get persecuted for the ten percent.
Annie, excuse me, but this is what I didn't want to get into as a back and forth. If you want to call Dr. Stutz and get this technical information, he said that he would send that out to anybody if you want to contact him and have him send you all the data. I think that's the direction I would go.
Chair, I removed her permission to talk just because it was way over.
Yeah, okay. Can we go to, is Sally still trying to get on or?
I have another one as well. I'll try Sally again. Sally, you're on. You just need to unmute your mic. I'm going to go to the next chair. Lisa, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I have been a teacher for forty-six years. I retired in two thousand and eighteen and I have taught in Philadelphia, in Maryland, in Colorado and also here since nineteen eighty-seven in Del Norte County. And I can tell you one thing, because I've taught preschool through adult ed. I could tell you one thing, kids are very resilient. You need to give them credit for that. And number two, I'm sorry, but if you're a car mechanic, I don't come in and try and tell you what you're supposed to do. I'm tired of people arguing about the mask. The mask works, the data supports it, the research supports it. And I find it ridiculous that we're even discussing this. It's for the protection of the kids, the teachers. In my personal opinion, people should all be vaccinated to get to school, including support staff, bus drivers, teachers, aides, everybody. Because we're not going to get a handle on this. We're going to have, we can have another variation happen. And I just wanted to thank Dr. Stutz, right? Because you're looking at somebody who is trained in the medical field. You don't go to their next door neighbor who doesn't know anything about cars and say, well, I don't agree with this. You know, I just, I feel like you, you're just, you know, going backwards. And anyway, thank you, Dr. Stutz, for doing a good job. I am friends with Warren Raywalt, so I know what the hell he went through at the beginning of the pandemic. And I'm sorry that it's continuing for you. And I apologize on behalf of some of the people in my county. And I'm telling you, kids, if you explain to kids what's going on, why it's happening, maybe they can convince their idiot parents to support the mask mandate so we can get out of this faster. I'm, you know, I know, I know kids, I, you know, like I said, I've been a teacher for, I was a teacher for a long, long time. And they will recover. It might take a while for, as far as the academic thing goes. And I just, I'm very disappointed, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, Kylie?
Sally Lorderhan, and I have nobody else online.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments for Dr. Stutz? Thank you, Dr. Stutz. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you for having me.
Okay, so we're running a little bit behind time. We we have a presentation. Amber Weir has got a group of youth here wants to give us a little presentation on dangers of vaping and things like that.
Thank you very much. Let's see, make sure all of our youth, if you want to turn your poster around so they can read it. There you go. All right. So we'll see about making sure the presentation is up. Do I press? Do I press a button or you guys? How do I, I can't, I can't see that far actually to make it slideshow, sit there? And play from current slide. Thank you. I guess I need glasses. I don't want to admit that yet.
It happens.
Well, thank you very much for having us today. My name is Amber Weir. I'm project director for California, well, for the NorCal for Health Project. It is a project housed under the California Health Collaborative, which is a community-based, not-for-profit organization throughout the entire state of California. So I'm here today. I want to tell you a little bit about myself. I've been in tobacco use prevention education for about five years. I actually started my career in that here with your public health with the Tobacco Use Prevention Program. I've had lots of opportunities and love to educate our community about tobacco use prevention. Let's see, did that? Oh, okay. That's all right. I think you can see it. So anyway, so I love to talk about it. I love to share. I've been in the staff meetings at the high school. I've been to all the different schools talking to teachers about how to educate their kids about this. We've been at public health fairs. I've been on the radio. I've actually been here before. A few years ago, talking to you all about tobacco use prevention, something that I have a lot of energy behind and feel like we need to do something. However, this last year I have had a renewed, even more sense of urgency for us to be dealing with this issue. I've had this because my daughter started high school. And she came home telling me stories about what's really going on in our high school. So now I have more firsthand experience, which frankly scares me what I'm hearing is going on. So I think it's more than the data shows based on observational studies. But as far as the data, I have lots of it for you. I have learned though, that that might overwhelm. It might be too much. People click off listening to all the data. So today I brought to you Storm, our youth coalition that is addressing the vaping in youth issue currently. Let me see if I can. But what's a presentation of mine without any data? So I'm going to do one slide of data and then I'll invite our youth. So this is a graph and I'm trying to see if you can see the, there you go, kind of the whole thing. That is from the California Healthy Kids Survey. And this is the, the most recent information that we have. This was for the school year of 2020 and 21 is in blue. And we're comparing it with the school year for 2014 and 2015 data from California Healthy Kids. And this is how many kids have vaped in the last 30 days. And what I really want you, what I really want to highlight is the seventh grade level, those are 12-year-olds. So right now you have roughly one in 10 12-year-olds that have vaped in the last 30 days. That, that's a huge jump. You have 11th graders, you have almost one in, was one in four, one in five, somewhere in between those two for 22% have vaped in the last 30 days. And then NT stands for non-traditional students. So that's like Sunset, Castle Rock. And we have, I think I looked at the last members, we have over 400 students in that school. So that's a lot. That's one in two students vaping. So I was at a presentation, there was a a conference talking about youth vaping and Dr., let's see, I'm trying to, he's like the leading expert in addiction. Came and talked, Dr. DeNoble was his name. And he told us that he used to work for Philip Morris. He was hired in 1979. He was released in 2006 from his confidentiality agreement with the company to go in front of court to talk about how they had studied nicotine addiction. And that they had found out that 41 milligrams of nicotine actually changes the brain chemistry and connections in your brain for addiction. 41 milligrams is exactly how much you see in that vape device on the screen that the girl is holding is called a jewel. One jewel is 41 milligrams. It's interesting. The tobacco companies know how much it takes to be addicted and it's conveniently in one purchase. So other than that, let me share with you what our youth are seeing here in our high school. And I'll start with Sinae. If you want to come up.
Here, I'll move it this way. Good morning, everybody. My name is Sinae and I'm a student at Delnart High School. Thank you for letting us be here. We are Storm and Storm stands for Standing Together and Overcoming Addiction with the Radical Movement. And we're here today to talk to you about vaping in our youth, in our community. Vaping has become a huge problem at our school. Our recent project we did in Storm was interviewing our peers about their experience with vaping. What stood out to me was that it was the kids that I wasn't expecting who were vaping. Kids who are straight A students, excel in sports and care about academic success are using it as a stress reliever. Kids wouldn't start to vape and get hooked onto it if the flavors weren't appealing. Although cigarettes have similar properties as vapes, such as nicotine, we all have a mutual hatred towards cigarettes because of the foul taste and smell. Addictive flavors are what encourage students to vape. A student from our high school even said her favorite flavor is grape aloe and that it was refreshing, tasty, and helped relieve her stress. Cigarettes all, oh, sorry, and help relieve her stress. One second. Cigarettes are also known as stress relievers. However, due to the stigma of smoking cigarettes, most students have turned to the alternative of vape. So you might wonder, what are some vaping flavors that students may like or at least want to try? Corn candy, gummy bear, and strawberry key. We are a few examples that can attract the attention of the As a teen myself, I find these flavors intriguing. The idea that there can be so many flavors to taste is truly fascinating. I'm only one voice, but definitely not the only one. If I feel this way, then can you imagine how many other teenagers feel the same way as me? These exotic flavors encourage students to vape more, increasing the likelihood to be addicted to vaping. If we want to seize the movement of teen vaping, we can contribute by removing flavors. Now I'll have Sienna come up to talk about her experience.
Hello, everybody. My name is Sienna and I'm a sophomore at Delnart High School. And I wanted to share with you my experience in just trying to use the bathrooms during our passing periods. Every time we've tried to use the bathrooms, they have been consistently full with girls vaping. It typically smells awful and of some sort of fruity flavor. The situation has gotten so unpleasant that I now always use the restroom during my second period class. I have to be excused during class time just so I can actually use the bathroom for what it is for. When I have shared my experience, I am often asked, where do I think these kids are getting these products from? And from what I can tell, teens are getting these products from family members and friends that are over 21. They get passed around and sold amongst fellow students. Even if somebody doesn't own a vape, they can get hits off their friends, which gets more and more kids interested in vaping. All it takes is one older sibling being okay with it and that kid becomes a dealer for everyone else. Basically they're accessible and if I wanted to go and get a vape, I very easily could. An important point to make is how the education method isn't working. Students know it's bad for them, but they are told all the time that things are bad for them. Cell phones are bad, sugar is bad, energy drinks are bad. All of these things are bad, yet everyone still uses them. Vaping is similar. Kids don't truly believe vaping will cause addiction and health problems that it is definitely causing. If this has been a problem for a long time and is simply educating youth on how bad it was, was the answer, this wouldn't be a problem anymore. More needs to be done. Why allow students to jeopardize their health and get addicted to these products by allowing them to stay on the market? Especially when so many kids are vaping and starting to vape at younger and younger ages. We are asking you to help us. We think the most effective thing that you can do is get rid of flavors altogether. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. You guys are very brave and so well-composed up here. I think I'm more nervous than they are speaking, public speaking. I'm impressed. So I'm sorry that I can't get this to.
That you just clicked on the picture you want to be on?
Yeah, seems to be working now. So just to reiterate, what are our kids saying? They're, they're saying it tastes good. It's stress relief. It's normal. Everybody's doing it and it's easy to access. Okay, so what have we been doing over the last 20 years to curb this? Like I said in the beginning, I started with Tobacco Use Prevention Program with Public Health. Public Health has actually been funded to be, we've been doing education for probably 20 years on tobacco use prevention. NCIDC does tobacco use prevention in our high schools. We have TUPA Tobacco Use Prevention Education that's been delivered in our high schools. We have healthcare systems like UIHS, an open door community clinic where they, every patient is screened for tobacco use. Education is given, cessation options are given. We even have the Department of Justice in on the action. So the Sheriff's Department had a DOJ grant. And our Crescent City Police Department is working on a Department of Justice, Justice Grant on educating. So when you add all of these programs up on how much education is being delivered in our community, it's close to a million dollars a year in education programs being spent to address this. Now, education is good. It's needed, but it hasn't been enough. So what more can we do? And that's where, as a member of the Tobacco Free Coalition and working with our youth and coming from public health, we're recommending a tobacco retail license. Now, this is a tool that is a best practice tool from public health. It's used in over 209 other jurisdictions in California have implemented a tobacco retail license as a way to curb youth initiation. Now tobacco retail licenses are unique in every community. You can tailor these to meet the needs of what your community wants and needs to address. So I actually have, we worked on, since we met with Jerry, we actually worked on a matrix that kind of goes a little bit more into detail than what these slides show. So I have copies here for you. But generally, this matrix shows, what I want to highlight is the provisions that are being recommended by the Tobacco Free Coalition and by our youth Storm Group. And then the data and statistics that are in here are supported by NorCal for Health. We are able to research and provide the data, there are two sheets, front and back, and then like a sheet and a half of sources for all of the data. But the first, the first column is the provision, what it is. We're suggesting five different provisions. Then it's, the second column is actually what does that provision mean? And then how many communities have already passed something similar to this provision? Evidence for the effectiveness and why this provision is needed. And then local statistics, what is happening locally, but why would we want to ask for this provision? So for those of you in, that may be listening and can't see this matrix, I'm happy to email it to anybody if they want it. But overall, it's talking about, as you heard from the youth, the eliminating the sale of flavored tobacco. From talking with our youth, that is the easiest step that would address the youth vaping issue. And as you heard, that's really what, from their observational studies, that's all the kids are doing is vaping and the vaping flavors. And then there's the social norm change, talks about limiting products and placement on the advertising. So it's really common. There's 26 locations to get tobacco products in our community. I think there's maybe 12 locations that you can get a gallon of milk. So it's readily available for everyone and accessible. So what some locations do is cap. They just stop having any new retail stores for tobacco retail license. So they just put a cap on how many can apply. And so we're suggesting that you put a cap on retail licenses. You allow everybody that has, that is selling it right now to continue selling it. But you don't allow more to sell. And you don't allow the transfer of the license to just go when a new owner owns the business. They have to reapply for the license and then you base it on population. So one store per 2,500 people is what is normally suggested. Within this Crescent City limits, which feeds most of our population, we're at four stores per 2,500. So we have a lot more stores than other communities. So I just wanted to give you some suggestions and things to look at, to consider if the board of supervisors would be willing. The, we did a presentation to the city council on January 10th. They voted three to two to bring this back and consider a tobacco retail license. And at that time, they suggested we come to you so that it is fair. So there isn't this imaginary line between Harding and Washington Street on when you can see or can't get access to flavors. So we're hoping that we can do this together and create parity. And I think reducing tobacco retail, I already said that. And then this is implementation of comprehensive tobacco retail license. It's no cost to the taxpayer. It prevents illegal sales. It levels the playing field for all businesses. We did some observa, or some interviews with businesses locally that were selling. And several of them, I was actually really surprised. They went, they were happy to share with us. They do not want kids vaping either. They want to address this as well. If there's an ordinance that they all have to abide by, then it's fair instead of a voluntary option. So that way there's no competitive advantage between, again, Harding and Washington Street or wherever that line is. We have seen that through a TRL being passed, there is in 2018, the Tobacco Retail Licensing Report. There's, I think, 60 other cities and counties listed on this. I just pulled three of them to show the before and after adoption rates of youth initiation. So that we know that this works. It's been around for years. It's been tested. And is a community support. So we did a public opinion poll. I believe there were 86. I can send you the information on how many people were polled in our community and we had overwhelming support that yes, they believe that you should pass policies to protect their youth from being targeted. And 92 to 97% felt that tobacco and nicotine products and advertisements should be placed, should not be placed in kid-friendly locations so that they're not influencing our youth. And tobacco retailers were, were positive as long as it was fair. And I believe that is everything. I tried to do it as fast as possible. Any questions?
Just one comment, since you have a child in high school, now you know why you need glasses. No, thanks, Amber. I appreciate it. Of course, we've kind of already gone through that with you. Any questions from board members?
I, I do. I was hoping to ask the kids a question because I ask my son this constantly, but he refuses the answer. The we talked about the use of vaping products. Do you guys see cannabis as a significant issue on your campus also? And vaping as a pathway to that? Or is it just, is used as much as vaping tools? Your opinion, I'd love to hear your opinion.
Yeah, I think it's definitely a problem. I don't think it's more of a problem per se than vaping, because it's more noticeable odor-wise. And high-wise with vaping, you can't really tell if anything, the smell of the vapes, because the flavors smell like fruits. They kind of blend in with perfume. So it's different.
Yeah, and I cannot confirm or deny that vaping is a passage to using cannabis or not. I will say there is definitely cannabis use in the high school, as I do also smell that in the bathrooms occasionally. But as Sinae was saying, it's a much more pungent smell and it lingers a lot longer than the flavors with vapes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions, supervisor? Okay.
Wow.
So, I, I think direction to staff would be, uh, you know, uh, actually, I had some discussion about this with Neil, and we talked about business licenses in general. We don't have a business license in the county. And, uh, that may be something that we want to look into along with this. Uh, but I think maybe Joel's probably going to have to be involved since it's an ordinance. Neil's going to have to be, uh, involved, and then probably the two-by-two with the city, uh, to make sure that we stay in line with what they're doing. And, uh, of course, Amber, I'm sure will be available, uh, to, uh, to meet along, uh, with that group. So that's what I'd like to see happen. So, I don't know who's on the two-by-two with the city. Darren, are you there? Okay, great. So if you guys will kind of get that moving, uh, anything, Joel, do you need it specific?
Um, no, I mean, it's totally interesting, I look forward to getting into it. I would just suggest maybe having a, a goal of two meetings from now, three meetings from now, so we know what our timeline is.
Yeah, I would think we're, uh, yeah, is the city bringing some, something back at their next meeting?
I've been told that the tentative date for this to be coming back is the, the March, is that eighth, whatever, the first Monday in March?
Yeah, so I would think by the end of, end of March, or, uh, by this, maybe the second meeting in March, uh, we could get together with them. And if, if we're going in that direction, if it looks like that's a direction we can take, um, then we maybe bring something back at that time. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I think it does. Chair Hemmingson, if I could request the two, the two supervisors on the two-by-two committee, since the city's so interested in having consistency on, on this, I'd also love you guys to address the issue with taxation on cannabis at the same time, so there's some consistency with, uh, that, since they're, they're interested in consistency on a policy that of similar nature.
That's a whole different deal.
Sorry.
I was gonna say, I don't know anything about that one.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Yes, they, they gotta listen and have real-life, uh, experience here today, so. Thank you.
Make that eye doctor's appointment too, you know, you're getting to that. Huh? Yeah. Okay. No, we got, uh, we got one more scheduled, I don't hear this, Mr. Short. Okay, we're moving on to item number fourteen, uh, which is, uh, discuss the current schedule of the Board of Supervisors' meetings as requested by Supervisor Short. This has to do with not so much the day, but I think the time of day, so. Mr. Short?
That's exactly right. Um, it's brought, been brought up by a couple of constituents about, um, you know, people's ability to come engage with us during the workday. So I just wanted to open up the discussion. I, I know it's probably been had in the past. So, um, I don't know, I was curious about what the results of those discussions were, and, and and what the reason is that we chose the time we're at, and maybe why we're not in the evening. I mean, I know some of these, some of these meetings go for a long time, so, um, I know that, that may factor into it quite a bit. But, uh, I, I was hoping to, uh, just engage in that discussion and...
I can give you my insights on it, but anybody else got any questions or anything that they want to throw in on this? This, this came up, uh, early on, uh, when I was first elected, and as a matter of fact, I'm the one that brought it up. And, uh, and was wondering why, why we weren't making it in the evening. It seemed like it would be much more, uh, beneficial to the public. And, and we did try it a couple of times, and then we end up with an empty, empty room. And in looking into that, you, you get, you know, people will get out and they'll, uh, say, well, you can't even have a meeting where I, I can't even go to it because I'm working, you know, on all this kind of stuff. But the other side of that is, and, uh, is, I've talked to people and they say, gee, I'd rather take off work than lose time with my family, or in the evening, dinnertime, or whatever time that we end up having it. That it's more of an inconvenience to take away time of my family than it is for me to take off work, because in this day and age, it doesn't seem like anybody has a problem taking off of work. And we found that if there's an item on the agenda that is important to the community, the community shows up. And, and it's, and this is all anecdotal, this is just me talking. But we found that if you keep it consistent and you stay with that consistency, people are more likely to show up than they are if, oh, you, you know, all of a sudden, oh, you guys are meeting in the evening now, I didn't know that. You know, I mean, it gets into a whole re-educating of the, of the, uh, of the population, so, uh, and and it becomes, um, and I, I don't want to say, uh, inconvenience, because staff is certainly willing to do it at any time. Uh, but when you, when you figure they've worked all day, and then they have to come to a board meeting, and at some point in time, if we have a meeting that stretches on for three or four hours, um, you're into the late hours of the evening, it, it becomes a burden on them and, um, uh, is, and I guess, I guess, kind of, not that we should put our convenience in front of the public, that's not what I'm saying. But, uh, for the benefit, if you look at what I've seen as the benefit would be, it just doesn't happen. We've, we've had meetings throughout the county. We thought, well, we'd get more, uh, engagement with the community if we moved the meetings from different places. And so we went out to Fort Dick, to the Grange, we went to Smith River, we went to Gasky, uh, we went to Klamath, and nobody showed up. Nobody, I mean, nobody. The only, and we did go to the high school, and one, uh, teacher brought their class in, and they saw that there were only people there. That's all the engagement, very few people, I would say, out of all the meetings that we had throughout the county, there was probably less than fifteen people that showed up at all of the meetings total. So when people, you know, people say, well, you can't, you don't have the meetings when I come to the meeting. If you get me a list of people that said, I'll come to the meeting every day, or every time, or not every day, but every time we have a meeting, uh, and commit to coming to the meeting because they're interested in what's going on, then I would say you've got something. But just people just saying, oh, you, you, I can't come to meetings because it's not, it, it's during my work. That just doesn't hold water with me. That's just my personal opinion, I've been through it. I, I kind of pushed this item, and it, uh, as it turned out, we tried a spot here and there, it just didn't, it just didn't work.
I appreciate, I very much, very much appreciate your experience and your opinion. That's just why I wanted to open up the discussion, and here I am repeating history. You, you were a new supervisor bringing it up, and here I am, a new supervisor bringing it up, so.
No, we could, I think we could absolutely appreciate the discussion, Supervisor Short and, and Supervisor Hemmingson's experiences. I mean, at the end of the day, it's really about trying to get as, as much public participation as possible. And, um, the others experienced and had, I think the most effective we've had so far of getting the public uh, participating, it's not necessarily the day or the time, but is this hybrid methodology is really helped to let the public in, they could be at their office, they could call in via Zoom or some other forum. This may be the solution in this new day and age of technology to this participation issue. Folks are truly having an issue with the evenings, but, um, like Supervisor Hemmingson said, when we, when we had those in the past, it just didn't generate the response that we had hoped.
No, and, and we didn't have the option that we have now with the virtual, with the virtual capability. So, um, that's a component that we have now, that if there are a, a, a number of people that are out there that say that they can't make it during, uh, during their work schedule, and, you know, with the prison out there, we've got, which schedule are we going to work to? You know, they're, they're the, they're, they're the lead employer of the county, uh, you have the most employees of anybody, and they've got three different shifts, so which shift do we pick? So, uh, but I think Chris, you know, brought up a good point. When I was, when I had, uh, uh, put this forth or put it out there for discussion and, and trial, we didn't have that option of, of the virtual, and, and we just, we just didn't get a response. We didn't get the response that I thought we would get. So, um, I, it, it makes no difference to me personally. I, it, you know, uh, five o'clock or six o'clock is just as good to me as two o'clock. It makes no, makes no difference to me. As a matter of fact, it's, I do work, so it is more inconvenient for me at two o'clock. But I think with the consistency issue, uh, and staffing, and, and to keep the, the, you know, be able to keep IT and all the virtual stuff going and have those guys on top of their game, I think is way more important uh, than, than starting to move our timelines around to where everybody, the community's confused about when they should go to meetings. That's just my personal thoughts on it.
I'm completely satisfied with leaving it where it is. You, you talked about the, people speaking to the inconvenience of the evenings. I can refer back to, you know, city council where we meet in the evening, and it, it, it is an inconvenience. And not, not to say that we shouldn't be inconvenienced, that's not where I'm going, but I can, I can relate to where the public would, would, uh, have that opinion of, you know, that's, that's family time, dinnertime, homework time, you know, get ready for tomorrow time. So, yeah, I'm, I'm satisfied with the time that we have now. I just wanted to be responsive to the constituents that were, that were bringing that up. So I appreciate the conversation and the experience.
Any public comment?
I agree with Mr. Hemmingson. I, I come to these meetings quite often. I go to the city council meetings, and, um, nobody really shows up. And that's why it's important that integrity of our elected, because, um, the, people are busy with their lives. And so we trust in your decisions because we don't, you know, people that have kids and families, you get home from work, you gotta make dinner, you gotta take the kids to the game, whatever. It's a busy lifestyle these days, and they don't have time to come and sit and monitor what you folks do. And that's why it's very important that we keep our integrity and professionalism. And plus that, in Oakland, just, I think it was last week, week four, they had a school board meeting that lasted till three AM in the morning. And I've been to a city council meeting where it lasted till eleven o'clock at night. You get a pressing issue at five o'clock, you're going to be paying overtime, number one, not that that's a big deal, I guess. But the part, you know, I mean, come on now. Everybody starts to lose consciousness in those kind of meetings. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't matter, but I, I understand there's a few out there that would like to see them at five, but they don't come on a regular basis because they can't. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Chair, I have none online.
Okay. You have none online, you said? None or what?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
For comments.
Any other comments on this particular thing? Okay, with that, Kylie, I think we got it all, didn't we?
Just legislative and budget.
Oh, yeah, any legislative and budget issues, uh, Neil?
Uh, nothing today, but I would like to reiterate what the Chair or Supervisor Howard said, and, and make myself available to anybody who has any questions about Measure R and the budget that was approved. You're more than welcome to come to my office at any time.
Okay. And with that, our next meeting is February the twenty-second at ten o'clock. Thank you all, we are adjourned.